I would like to call to order the October 28th, 2025 regular board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. On behalf of the Richland Two Board of Trustees, I'd like to welcome you to our regular scheduled board meeting, and I want to talk a little bit today, just quickly, about leadership, and especially in times that are of uncertainty and that are a little scary and spooky. Leadership isn't about having all the answers, it's about having the courage to move forward, even when the path isn't perfectly clear. Sometimes what we feel uncertain is simply an invitation to trust the process, to lean on one another, and to remember why we're here, to serve children and strengthen our community. And one of my favorites, General Colin Powell once said, "Perpetual optimism is a force multiplier." And I believe that when we lead with optimism, courage, and faith, we multiply the good we can do together. Now with that, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, as of right now, I'm going to have to hand vote because I left my computer like a bad student, but my husband is going to save me and bring it to me later. So we will go ahead and get started with item, let's see here, 3.1, Approval of the Agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the agenda for the October 28th, 2025 regular board meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is, oh yeah, the motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Ms. Washington to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, if there being no discussion, board members, please vote. I vote in the affirmative. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 4.1, Executive Session. We will now move to item 4.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
Yes, I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion discussing student admission requests into the District Adult Education Program, employment recommendations, and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott and seconded by Mr. Dennis to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? All right, Dr. Elkin Scott, is that correct? That's correct. All right, board members, please vote. I vote in the affirmative. Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. We will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Mr., oh, Mr. Dennis.
I move that we adjourn the executive session at 5:47 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott to end Executive Session at 5:47 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? All right, there being no discussion, Mr. Dennis, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 5.1, the Consent Agenda. We will now, may I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the October 28th, 2025 regular board meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, Ms. Washington, is that correct? Okay, it is correct. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 6.1, South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Recognitions. The agenda item in this section is a special recognition for the South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship. The Boardmanship Institute's six levels of recognition and are based on points accrued annually. Boardmanship Institute levels 1 through 5 are presented to board members at the district during a board meeting. Level 6, the highest level of recognition, is awarded during the South Carolina School Board Association's annual convention. All right, I would like to ask, oh, Dr. Moore, would you like to ask, or do I ask?
We can ask together.
Okay, there we go.
So we would like to ask Mr. Gary Dennis, Ms. Shelley Williams, and Ms. Nikki Porter to come forward and receive their award. We will also ask Ms. Darcy Rush, our Senior Chief of Communications Officer, will present
Good evening, Dr. Moore and trustees. Established in 1982, the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardman, Boardsmanship Institute offers a year-round training program focused on developing leadership skills for board members and deepening their understanding of state and national educational issues. Board members are recognized for achieving each of six levels of accomplishment within the program, as we just heard from Ms. Nash. The Boardsmanship Institute's six levels of recognition are based on points earned annually. Levels 1 through 5 are presented to board members at the district level during a board meeting like tonight, while Level 6, the highest level of recognition, is awarded by the SCBA during their annual convention. Tonight, we are proud to recognize three board members who have reached new levels of achievement, beginning with Mr. Gary Dennis, Level 1. Ms. Shelley Williams, Level 1. And Ms. Nikki Porter, Level 3. Richland School District Two congratulates each of you on your outstanding accomplishment and commitment to continued growth and leadership. And if you will, just display your certificates. And Dr. Moore, if we could have you on this side, please? And everybody, just smile for Rob. Thank you.
Congratulations to our board members on your achievement. I had told them I was going to use my Ed McMahon voice, but Darcy's voice was much better, so thank you for that. All right, we will now move on to item 7.1. We don't have anyone for public participation, so we will now move on to item 8.0, Voting Session Items. The board will now vote on items discussed in Executive Session. So item 8.1, Student Admission Request into the District's Adult Education Program. May I please have a motion on the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students 1 through 3.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Ms. Porter. Is there any discussion? All right, as soon as we have that on the screen, all right, Mr. Trapp, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 8.2, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Washington, is that correct? Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. We will now move on to items 9.0, Unfinished Business Action Requested. Item 9.1, Policy Adoption, Policy BEA Live Streaming Board Meetings. May I please have a motion regarding the policy adoption for Policy BEA Live Streaming Board Meetings?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis?
I move to adopt Policy BEA Live Streaming of Board Meetings with a proviso that the effective date for implementation is January 1st, 2026.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, there being no discussion. Mr. Dennis, is that correct with the date and everything?
That is correct.
Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 9.2, Policy Revision, Policy GCLE Unencumbered Time. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for Policy GCLE Unencumbered Time?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Ms. Porter?
I move to approve the revisions in Policy GCLE Unencumbered Time as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Ms. Williams to approve the Policy GCLE as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, board members, well, is that correct, Ms. Porter? The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 9.3, Policy Revision, IHAA English Reading, Writing, Language Arts Education. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for Policy IHAA English Reading, Writing, Language Arts Education?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the revisions for Policy IHAA English Language, English Reading, Writing, Language Arts Education as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Porter. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you all will just confirm that that is correct, Ms. Washington? The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 9.4, Policy Revision, ILBB State Assessment Programs. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision, Policy ILBB State Assessment Programs?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the revisions for Policy ILBB State Assessment Programs as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis to approve the Policy ILBB as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, is that correct, Ms. Washington? Okay, the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Moving on to item 9.5, Approval Elementary Attendance Line Adjustment. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the elementary attendance line adjustments?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
I move to approve the elementary attendance line adjustments as presented, with implementation beginning in the 2026-2027 school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Dennis?
I just wanted to say thank you for staff for getting me all those online responses that I asked for for the last meeting before I could vote on this. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, all right, any more discussion, anybody? All right, okay, if, once we get on the screen, okay, Ms. Williams, is that correct? With the date and everything? The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to item 10.1, 2024-2025 Achievement Report. I almost went straight to adjournment, y'all, sorry about that. I had to catch myself. So we want now, this agenda item is the section in the 2024-2025 High School Achievement Report. Dr. Moore, I'm not going to cut you off short there.
Madam Chair, I had flipped the page too. So I was right there with you. We are very excited tonight to bring to the board Mrs. Jennifer Morrison, our Senior Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Jennifer Coleman, our Executive Director of Accountability, and their supporting cast to discuss our high school achievement report.
Apologies, I have a little bit of a cold, so I just wanted to prep for that. I am very excited to share this, our high school achievement report from the 24-25 school year, Ms. Nash, Ms. Washington, our board members, and Dr. Moore. I think you'll see tonight that we have some really good gains in Algebra I, which is a hard area to move, and some unprecedented gains in U.S. history. And I just want to say publicly, thank you to our teachers, our students, and our principals who are really responsible for moving this. And I do think, you know, that we have a lot of momentum and excitement at the secondary level that will move into this year, where there's some work to do with Biology, English II, and our career assessment, which is WIN right now. But I know also that the board is very interested in details of what that will look like, and some of that will be shared tonight. But even more details will be shared in a Richland Two instructional plan that we'll be putting into the board brief by next week. So just now, I'm listening to the questions tonight to really see how to build that out as we need to. And at our November 11th meeting, the academics is ready to present an update on that instructional plan and the data that we have so far this year with benchmarks and MAP to kind of show how things are moving so that you all can see that movement. And we'll do that throughout as we schedule them together. And so we just want to make sure that you're getting what you need, but we are super excited. We can really begin to see a lot of the effects of the work that's happening at the school and district level for this work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coleman.
Good evening. So typically, we start off this presentation by talking about our graduation rate, and unfortunately, I won't be able to do that tonight. As you all were notified by Dr. Moore, there was a delay in the release of the state report cards due to calculation errors. And unfortunately, the graduation rate is one of the indicators that is released when the report cards go out. So we did actually find out yesterday that the report cards will be released on this Monday, the 3rd of November, and as soon as we get that information, of course, we will have that sent out to you as soon as possible. All right, so let's jump into EOCEP. So the EOCEPs are actually a part of the Education Accountability Act that was passed in South Carolina in 1998. And that law stated that we had to administer an end-of-course test in one math, one science, one English, and one social studies course. And for us, and although these have changed over the years, they are now Algebra I, English II, Biology, and U.S. History. If any of you have had high school kids, you will know that the EOCEP grabs their attention really well because the EOCEP score becomes 20% of their final grade. So this is one that we really have kids bought all into because they want, know it will impact their grades. So when we look at a distribution of the scores from 24-25, students get an A, B, C, D, or F on each end of course, and you can see the distribution by grade level for each of the subjects on the screen. Now, before we go to the next slide, and this is always kind of an interesting thing to point out, when we talk about passage rates in the state of South Carolina, passing is considered a D or above. So just keep that in mind because what you'll see is essentially our passage rate is Fs, 100 minus the percent of kids who are in Fs. All right, so for Algebra I, we have, we have really had a laser focus on this, and it has been challenging, and the math setbacks during missed instructional time during the pandemic made this even more challenging. So I got to say, we were pretty happy to start seeing some positive movement on our Algebra I and where our kids are going with that. You can see that we have a two-year change, we had an increase of 3.3 percentage points, and a five-year change of 5. You can also see that the state is also making that kind of recovery that we've talked about in mathematics. For our Biology, it was a bit of a rough year. We saw a 3.15% drop in our district, and it's a little under a percent lower than it was five years ago. State also experienced a drop from last year. English II, we saw about a 1.29% drop. I will note that we have always had incredibly high English II passage rates on our EOCEP. You can see those are up in the upper half of the 80%. You can see the state had a small increase. And U.S. History, I have to tell y'all, this is probably one of the hardest tests that I've ever seen. In my previous district, I would do correlational studies between the U.S. History EOCEP and the AP U.S. History test, and they are very highly correlated. This test is hard, which is one of the reasons you do see a lower passage rate, but thank goodness, we're starting to see some positive momentum with that, with a 2.1% increase from last year and overall a 5% increase from five years ago. The state also experienced an increase as well. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davis at this point to talk about our instructional plan.
Good afternoon. So with that said, and the results that we received, one of the things that you can really deduce from those results is that we're, our data's stabilizing. We're pretty much right where we are, where we were post-pandemic, pre-pandemic. So coming out of the pandemic, our data is stabilizing, and we're in a good place to begin to shift and move things forward. So in order to do that, a couple of things that we're going to do, starting, we've already started this, is ensuring the fidelity of district curriculum implementation. Some of the things that we have gone over now is that, you know, we have a new math adoption, which is Math Nation Accelerate Learning, Study Sync, all of those are high-quality instructional materials, and really, really honing in on the practices in terms of how we support teachers and schools with implementation, providing content-specific coaching as it relates to each content area. And with that coaching, some of the things that we're doing with coaching is teaching our teachers how to unpack, working alongside our teachers to unpack the standards, to internalize the lesson, to help them really unpack the high-quality instructional material so that they understand what the misconceptions are prior to teaching the students, so when they're in, in action with our students, they're able to deduce what those misconceptions are pre, pre-teaching, so that they're able to give the best support to our students while they are learning. Also, utilizing our collaborative planning and data, we've rolled out PLCs and really rolled out the professional development for PLCs and how we implement specific protocols to plan, as well as to look at data to determine where our students are struggling the most to be able to provide in-time interventions in class during Tier 1 instruction. And also looking at really, you know, you got to inspect what you, what you, what you, what you're implementing. And so with that, looking at ways, how do we maintain accurate data entry, as well as how do we monitor the progress of our students' learning and with benchmarks, as well as, and really aligning it to see the impact of instruction as it relates to the high-quality instructional material. I pass this on to my next partner.
I thought he was going to do my bullet point because he was getting, so for special ed, one of the things we have to remember is special ed kids are gen ed kids first. So we first have to make sure that they are being exposed to what they need to be exposed to in gen ed. But alongside with that, we're working through co-teaching practices and inclusive practices for our special ed kids.
All right, we thought we'd mix it up and just change who's presenting every five minutes. So we're going to cover the final piece of data, and this is one of our other really big pieces for our high school kids, and that's the South Carolina Career Readiness Assessment. This test has had approximately six different names. It is one of the greatest procurement debates in the state of South Carolina over who won this contract. And so WIN actually does produce this assessment, and it's called the South Carolina Career Readiness Assessment. All students in their third year of high school are required to take this. It has four components. There's a math assessment, a data assessment, a reading assessment, and a soft skills assessment. So if you guys have been around a while, you've probably heard on the old work keys we would talk about, did you get platinum, gold, silver, or bronze? And those terms mean something to the workforce in our community, and the kids can take those certificates and then implement them, help them get jobs in certain levels when they entry, when they enter. Also, it does help our college-level students to have that higher level and submit that with their applications if they're college-bound versus career-bound. Now, those levels have changed to 1, 2, 3, 4, and they did a very good job at the State Department of educating the business community on that switch and why it was going to be different, so that the business members would know what that meant if you came in with a 1, 2, 3, or 4. So we've had this test for about three years, and what you can see is that we did experience a dip this year, almost four percentage points, and the state did also. And we're still trying to figure out what that dip is attributed to, especially since we saw it both at the district level and the state level. But this assessment is, is really critical for kids regardless of what their path is when they leave us. All right, so now I'll turn it over to Ms. Kane, and she will talk about the instructional plan for our career readiness.
Good evening. For us, we are implementing the WIN bootcamps at our high schools, and those are bootcamps in preparation for taking the test, and they are gathering those seniors who were less than successful in their fall administration, well, in their spring administration of their junior year. And so they are day-intensive instructional recaps and remediation as they work towards that. We are also now including the use of the WIN curriculum in our special education coursework, and it's outside, of course, of the Career Tech Ed, because initially, when we implemented the WIN curriculum in the district, we did so through our CTE programming. So those teachers were using its fidelity to implement it in authentic spaces, so like data, math for the employment placing. For College Career Readiness, we are working within our CTE to articulate those stackable industry credentials because we have moved now to the three, top-tier three credential, or one plus two for three. And we are implementing a graduation quality task force, and we're providing clear and consistent consistent guidance for middle and high school course selections so that we are preparing when they enter high school to better select their courses in a CTE and/or college preparation program.
So we are going to turn it over to Dr. Moore for her comments, and any questions from the board?
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. So board, as we get ready to open it up, I do want to emphasize the fact that we recognize with our high school students that our primary focus is to make sure that they're ready for the four Es because we've added entrepreneurship to that. So it's not just employment, enrollment, enlistment, it is entrepreneurship. And so I hope through the presentation that you've seen tonight, we were very intentional to include Ms. Kane around that CTE component, but also Ms. McLaughlin around our students with disabilities. So with that, we'll open it up for discussion. Oh, and we are very excited for Monday to come, very excited.
Okay, board members.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, so I want to know, or do we have any projections of what this year might look like based off our numbers from last year? Or do we feel positive or negative on that? Like going forward, do we feel very positive? And then the other was this content-specific coaching and professional learning, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, like what y'all want to do with that. And I would also want to know the collaborative planning. I would like to know a little bit more in detail about that as well.
Okay, so this is what we're going to do. Jennifer Coleman is going to talk about how we're feeling about the numbers. But I'm just going to say, I feel very positive in terms of the direction that Richland II is moving right now. We know it works. The principals are able to articulate that really well, and a lot of our teachers are as well, and it's making sure that we have that consistency and that scale. And then with coaching, I am placing a piece on that into the instructional plan that you're going to receive during, in the board brief, and so hopefully that will take care of that. But we do have, our goal this year is to provide high-quality coaching cycles to 25% of our teachers across the board, and that is happening. It's very exciting, and we're putting a good number of updates in the board brief about that. And then I'm just going to ask, after Dr. Coleman, I'm going to ask Dr. Davis to come up and talk a little bit about collaborative planning and what we're doing with professional learning communities.
So Mr. Dennis, this is an excellent question. It's always kind of been a challenge to monitor kids in high school because we don't have the same grade level assessment that we give every year. The EOCs are kind of a one-and-done. So we do have a couple of other things that we're looking at. One of the metrics that the State Department added to the accountability system was called the On Time to Graduate. So we have a 1 YOTG, how many ninth graders do we have that are on time to graduate? A 2 YOTG, how many 10th graders are on time to graduate? Same with 3 YOTG. And I have to say, I'm unbelievably proud of our high school principals. We've started having our continuous improvement data meetings with them, and the data that they are coming with now really is higher than we've ever had, and seeing them tracking literally kid by kid. Okay, Jennifer Coleman failed Algebra I in fall semester. We have to get her in something so she stays on track and earns that math credit. So they're doing a lot of the digging down to kid by kid. We do, however, in the four EOCP courses, give benchmarks to those students. They have already had their first semester first benchmark, and the data looks promising that we're seeing some of the practices that we've put in place are starting to pay off. And some of that, too, I have to say, well, I can't say too much. Come Monday, you'll see that, you'll start to see that we're really, and you did see this Nessie Ready scores, our middle schools are producing higher-level scholars. And we're starting to see then, as they matriculate into high school, they're, high schools meeting the challenge and keeping those kids moving. So it's kind of like starting to watch a train get together so it can all go in the same direction. That feels like where we're at right now with our data monitoring with them.
Thank you.
So to speak about the PLC work and the planning and the collaboration protocols and things that we've worked out, at the very beginning of the school year, we rolled out an arc for learning for PLCs. And in the arc of learning, the first part of that learning was that we were going to establish the culture, the norms, and really the flow of how our PLCs were working in particular, as well as training different school leaders, assistant principals and principals on how to effectively facilitate those PLCs. And so just last month, we rolled into phase two of the training and the part, phase two of the training where we began to introduce protocols. And that first protocol was the collaboration protocol. And with that being said, some of the, some of the elements of that protocol would be looking at the standard. We have two, we have high-quality instructional materials, which is curriculum in our system. And so with that, what we do is really look at the standard, what is, what is it required to master the standard? So where teachers in that collaboration protocol, what they'll do is they'll break down, they'll take the assessments first in the high-quality instructional material, then look at the standards that are being taught. So you start with that assessment to begin, to end, what it, what it looks like and what students are going to have to be able to do in order to master that particular standard. And so starting with that assessment, working backwards, unpacking the standard, what are the key vocabulary, what, what, what strategies do we need to take to design an instructional experience for students so they're able to learn at the level that is required for them to master the standard? So for example, if students are required to analyze materials, then quite naturally, just like if we're playing basketball and if we're trying to beat the press, then the teachers are going to be working with students in class on how to analyze the material. Same thing is beating a press. You practice that strategy to, 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 to beat the press. And so it's the same thing with analyzing that, you should see them doing that. Same thing with math problems. If we're learning conceptually in math, then we're going to be making sure that students are engaging in activities that are high-quality and that they're conceptually understanding what it is to master the standard. And that being said, so they get practice before they take the assessment. So when they do take the assessment, they are prepared, and you're not looking at something foreign that we're just seeing for the first times that are able to do it. So setting our students up for better success during instruction in real time, and all of those pieces take place in the collaboration, with the collaboration of teachers during that particular protocol. And we'll roll out the second one at the next principal's meeting this month in November.
Thank you. And Mr. Dennis, can I just add to that? Ms. Morrison and I were at a high school yesterday for one of their data chats. When she talks about breaking it down by each of the cohorts, we looked at specific data. This particular high school had 20 of their ninth graders from last year to 10th grade this year of students that were not, that are still in their denominator but have not returned to this particular school. That is the level of detail that we are going down to by each grade level. On top of that, one of the things we specifically talked about, since my degree is Biology, that's always a topic of conversation for me, math and science. We talked about the fact that this particular school has only one veteran Biology teacher. All the other teachers are brand-new, and one is alternatively certified. Not a bad thing because I'm alternatively certified, but, so has content but may not have the pedagogy yet. What was the resolution of that is Dr. Davis will be coming in and doing some coaching cycles with that particular team. On top of that, this high school has a very high-performing ELA team, PLC, that is going to also model for them what their PLC should look like. So we're being very granular around targeting what each school needs in order to move the data at that particular school. And it'll be in our instructional plan.
Thank you all very much for that information. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Just a quick question. Again, thank you so much for everything, the clarity and being able, I know that having that middle school and high school with the selection has been, you know, one of the hot topics of selection of courses and what it looks like. So I see that you did say you have a clear and consistent guidance for the middle and high school on how they select their courses. Is there a possible way that we could get that plan to see what it looks like, or will that be in the, or you can talk about it now, or what that, what that entails?
All right, so Ms. Williams, thank you. Because we know, we have really realized through conversations with a number of our board members and just making sure that we're hearing the feedback about what families and students need to get on the right track right at the beginning of middle school, even at the end of elementary school. And there are things that are required by the state, there are things, there are so many things that the Richland II does, but making sure that everyone is clearly aware of those things and that there are clear guidelines for that, for every single parent that are understandable and that can be used. So we did put in the board brief, I think a couple of weeks ago, kind of some of what that plan actually is, but I can certainly share it and make sure that you've got it. But I'm going to ask, Dr. Davis has been working with our lead counselor, our counselor coordinator on this, and I'm going to ask him just to give you a quick rundown.
So a couple of things we've been working on, really trying to create parent-friendly resources so they're able to see what's in front of them. And so a couple of things we revamped, we just re, we did an audit of the course catalogs for the system as well as all of the rest, all of the high schools, as well as the course catalog for the middle school. And so we clearly found that there were some things that we need to have updated that were parent-friendly and that they would understand. And so some of that would be the IGP process. You'll find that in the course catalog now. We haven't published it yet because we're still working on it, and, but you'll find out that there's going to be the IGP process detailed out fully will be in there, as well as we work with Jennifer Kane, our partner here. And as a result, we have a district framework for pathways as well, so that students will begin, they'll know that pathways holistically about what we offer in Richland School District II. And then, of course, when you click on each individual high school's program of study, they'll have their pathways that are specific to their schools, but overall, you'll be able to see the framework for the entire district, which is based off of the national framework with regards to that. So all of those, and then we're also cleaning up course codes for courses so that we'll be able to make scheduling really easy for schools pathways. Yes, ma'am.
So while you're doing that, something that recently popped up was the prerequisites for some of these courses. If our students are on the fast track or ahead come middle school from taking high school courses in middle school, if it's consistent across the board of when they're allowed to take that next, the next level course, that they're not saying, oh, you can't take this until your junior year, or you can't take this till your sophomore year, so that the student doesn't go through a lull or a break because they were ahead, and now they have to wait till their grade level preference to take the next level course. So that's something also that was a little inconsistent between the different high schools from some different parents. And I didn't mention that to you in the past, so I wanted to just mention it now.
Note it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is my last. Madam Chair. Again, thank you so much for being able to hear what our community members and stakeholders were saying and just taking it all in to make a change and an impact on our district. And I truly am, appreciate it and very grateful, and it does not go unnoticed. Thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, can I just add? One of the other components, and Ms. Kane can address this in more detail, is that we focused on trying to ensure that our students are completers. They're not just taking one CTE course, but we want them to be completers so that when they do fill that E of entrepreneurship or employment, they are actually ready to enter into the workforce with the skills that employers have told us is what they're looking for. So that is a critical part of the work that we've been doing to provide clarity for parents on how to set up their child for success.
Okay. Does she have something, Mr. Dennis?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
When it comes to the Algebra I, how are we feeling with the state moving geometry before Algebra I? I, I feel, I personally, in math, I think that's a good thing. So I'm hoping that's what we are feeling as, or admins feeling as a district.
Okay. So I just wanted to say, this was a long conversation with our principal at Westwood yesterday, and they made the decision to make that change a little bit early, to make it a year early, and it has, it really paid off and is continuing to pay off this year in Algebra I because the new geometry. Remember, it's not the old geometry like I took, which I loved. It was great, you know, but the new geometry is actually a lot of algebra preparation. And so students who made that switch and took geometry first last year, which happened, I think, at three of our high schools, they're really set up for algebra this year. And so I'm going to let Dr. Davis talk a little bit about that, but we see that that makes a huge difference in the data.
I have one question to ask. When you're doing that, I know for some middle schoolers that get in early, are they going to be able to do the geometry if they're on that advanced track as well?
I'm already in it.
Okay.
I'm already taken. All right. So to answer your question in terms of geometry, how do we feel about? So let me give you an example of what has happened. The students there are currently in our system now, if you look at, if you trace the standards all the way back from student, when students were in kindergarten, they have been taking geometry in preparation for this moment all the way up until now. So if you look kindergarten, you got geometry, first grade, a little bit more geometry, second grade, more geometry. And if you look all throughout the standards, this group of students that are here now have already been exposed to geometry. Each year, you go more in-depth with it. And so in terms of the shift, what it does, it gives students time developmentally, if you, back in the day, you would hear teachers say, these students are not ready for Algebra I. So that year gap, because they've changed it to more conceptual math, it gives students time, one, to develop, get more development, develop their thinking, the abstract thinking and all of the things, as well as give them up to understand math more conceptually than previous before you apply the standard algorithm. So all that being said, I think it's going to set students up for better success to be able to see better results in terms of geometry. And if you want to look at results, you can check out Alabama State because they started this way before South Carolina did. They changed their course sequence several years ago. Next question?
That's it. Thank you very, very much. And thank you all for answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That's all? Anybody else have any questions? Okay. All right. Well, we're going to move on to item 11.0, Agenda items for the next meeting. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for November 11th, 2025, regular board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is November 11th, 2025, with the call to order at 5:30 PM. We will then have the welcome and pledge of allegiance, followed by approval of the agenda. We will release to executive session, and in executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to inspirational moment, followed by the consent agenda, which will include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meetings, classified employment releases, and in-district transfers. We'll then go to public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which will include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. Next, we will have our unfinished business, no action requested. The board will review policy revision proposal for policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities. We'll then move to new business action requested. The board will review the proposed South Carolina School Board Association Resolution. Next, we'll move to new business, no action requested. The board will receive the first quarter financial report, followed by the operations report on capital improvement, proposed 2026 board meeting schedule. The board will have a discussion on policy IKADD, Content and Credit Recovery, and discussion of policy DN, no, IJD, IJND, Artificial Intelligence Responsible Use. We'll then move to agenda items for the next meeting. We'll review the draft agenda for the December 9th, 2025, regular board meeting. Move to our, if needed, items of public participation, executive session, if needed, voting on executive session items, conclude with board and superintendent comments, followed by adjournment.
All right. Well, board members, do you have any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next agenda or added to a future agenda? And you don't have to put my December 20th birthday party on the agenda. So if you have anything else.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
Not so much added to the agenda, but I know that we all are, are well can't talk, that on November 1st, that many families are going to experience not having their SNAP benefits. As a child, it wasn't SNAP, it was food stamps. And I was one of those kids who actually family received food stamps. So I'm very concerned about what are we doing as a district? So what I would like to ask Dr. Moore, if you would, if you could just put something in the board docket to let us know exactly what we're doing, because we're not going to meet again until November 11th. So I would like to know how we are going to supply, you know, additional foods. I know that we have the food, what is it called at the schools? Backpack. Yeah, we do have that, but that's going to run out, especially if, you know, students who are receiving that. And if you look at our free and reduced lunch, we have a high number of free and reduced lunch. So I would like for you guys to put some strategies together. Are we having a food drive? Are we doing a competition for schools that maybe we can award, especially high school free tardy passes or blue jean dress-down day for district staff? So I would like to see what we're doing so we can let families know that we're in this with them and we're here to support them. So if you could just get something in a packet to let us know what you guys have in place for November 1st, to make sure that our students are still able to eat and come to school and not be hungry. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, thank you. Dr. Elkin Scott, you are absolutely right. And we talked about this yesterday. We had another meeting today. Abby Cobb, our social worker under Mr. Sherman, working with also our senior chief of communication. We are putting a plan together. We will have something finalized by tomorrow. Because you're absolutely right, 64% of our students currently live in poverty. On top of that, we have a very large workforce that is connected to Fort Jackson. So our civil servants are not receiving pay at this particular point in time, while the military members are receiving their pay, our civil servants aren't. We also recognize that we do have employees who use SNAP, receive SNAP benefits for a variety of reasons. And so you're absolutely right. We as a district need to be concerned about that and are working to put together a district-wide food drive in which we would be able to collect donations, and then our school social workers under Ms. Cobb would be distributing that food. Because here's the other primary focus for me, and I know it's the same for the board, we have a week of Thanksgiving that our students will be out of school. And so when you add that up, it's nine days that students will be out of school without food possibly. Because we know a large portion of our students come to school to eat breakfast and lunch and may not even get dinner, but they know they'll get a breakfast in the morning and lunch at the school. So we are definitely looking at ways, and we will share out with the board what our plan is and let you know if anybody in the public would like to make any donations, where you would be able to do that.
And also, if we can make sure that we rely heavily on our district partners, and maybe they can give some food gift cards. And I would challenge my board members that maybe we can come up with at least $50 per board member or more to at least make a donation for the food drive as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board members, well, I guess we are now at the end, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to adjourn the October 28th, 2025 regular board meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, the motion's been made by Ms. Washington, second by Mr. Dennis. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. The voting is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.